Wow. I know. It's like.
Nothing called also. That's what I'm doing. We're now. Let me see. Just for the record.
Nope. We're decided.
I'm glad I've had it.
Since what, they were in 2018? Twenty two?
Mine is yours. I didn't hear. The Wi-Fi isn't working.
Mine is working.
Mine is working. We're broken. It's not even. It's not even given the option to access it. I'm fine. I downloaded and I'm fine. But.
There's the law I was fighting on. I call to order the May 10th, 2021, meeting of the Oxford Planning Commission. It is a memorial event because we have all commissioners live and in person for the first time since February of 2020. So it is good to have everybody at least back for this meeting. Commissioners, you have your agenda in front of you. We have one withdrawal, which is number 10. Otherwise, are there any revisions or changes to be made to the current agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor.
Great.
All right. The agenda is approved, which brings us to the minutes from the April 12th, 2021 meeting. Commissioners, I hope you've had the opportunity to review and make any changes or suggested changes if needed. Are there any revisions, deletions, improvements to the April 2021 meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 12th, 2021 minutes.
I'm Zube approval.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. They are approved. We have one staff report to be done. It is. It is a sad note, but I'll let Ben explain.
So I'm really, I'm sad. I'm pleased to inform you, and I also regret to inform you that this will be Molly, Molly's last meeting with us. She's been with us for a few years now, and she has done, I can't tell you how much of an asset she's been to our department, this city, this community. And we're sad to see her go, but she's accepted a job, and she's going to go on and do some great things, and we're happy to see her do that. So thank you, Molly, for all your wonderful work for this city.
And I need to plan acknowledge them.
Thank you, Molly. Congratulations. All right. Administrative approvals is for the audience. J.W. McCurdy, through administrative approval, was granted a residential side yard setback variance in case number 2735A. That has been approved. Next, we have consent agenda. The consent agenda is items which will be not taken up individually unless there's some objection to the same. Consent agenda includes public hearing for case number 2736. It's a sign, special exception for a second sign at property located 1102 Van Buren Avenue. Also is case number 2737. It's also a request for a special exception for a second sign at property located at 203 North Lamar Boulevard. Third is 2738. It's Pine Lake Church. It's a special exception as to the requirements for the appropriate facade for property located at Pat Patterson Parkway. And lastly, William Kennon has filed for a request for a special exception under case 2740, also seeking a special exception as to the appropriate facade for property located at 84 Highway 30 East. Is anyone here tonight wish to pull any of these items out of the consent agenda and have a hearing on the same? Any, any planning commission, planning department, any, any word from anybody?
Nothing.
All right. Any commissioners wish to pull these out? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. The consent agenda is approved. If you were here for any of those cases called, they have been approved via consent of the commission. Case number, as mentioned earlier, case number 2739 has been withdrawn, which brings us now to public hearing for case 2741. Scott Lewis has filed a request for a special exception for a bed and breakfast establishment to be, to be permitted within a historic preservation district for property located at 10003 South Lamar Boulevard. Ben?
Yes, sir. This property is located on South Lamar. It's just north of Johnson Avenue. It measures about 1.3 acres. It's zone traditional estate residential, and it's located in the South Lamar Historic District. Scott and Brandy Lewis are requesting a special exception to utilize this house as a bed and breakfast. The house contains seven bedrooms, nine bathrooms, with nearly 13,000 square feet of livable space. It has been on the real estate market for several years, likely due to the size of the home. The applicants believe that through the granting of the special exception for bed and breakfast at this location, it will be, serve as a mechanism to preserve this contributing historic home. The applicants intend to use the existing driveway on the south side of the home or on the Johnson side for most of their parking needs, but there is an additional spot on South 13th Street. A request for bed and breakfast, it does list additional standards for consideration, which are as follows. The bed and breakfasts are only allowed in a historic district or in homes on lots of one acre or more, and this property is in the South Lamar Historic District, and it does exceed one acre. Bed and breakfast establishments must be managed by and serve as the primary residence of the owner of the property. The Lewis's application does state that this property will serve as their primary residence and, and that they will manage this establishment. Bed and breakfast may, I'm sorry, breakfast may be provided to register guests, but no other full meals are allowed, and they do intend to comply with this provision of the ordinance. Bed and breakfast establishments shall contain no more than five bedrooms lettable to guests at, at any one location or premise, and while this does have seven bedrooms, the applicant indicates that only five of them will be used for guests. No cooking.
Alexa, pause.
Hello?
Five.
Okay. No cooking facilities shall be permitted in guest rooms, and they will comply with this provision also. A bed and breakfast may have only one sign meeting the following standards in the sign ordinance, and a sign may not be more than four square feet and may be mounted, may only be mounted on the wall, and they do intend to comply with this. Parties, parties, meetings, receptions, or other unrelated activities shall be prohibited. They do intend to comply with that provision. And only one bed and breakfast establishment shall be allowed on the face of each city block or within 500 feet of another bed and breakfast establishment. The nearest one at this time is the Z Bed and Breakfast, and, and that's over 500 feet from this location. It's previously discussed with the Shaw House and the Ison Place. Larger historic homes like the subject property can be challenging to the market because of the costs associated with not only acquisition, but then maintenance of the property and the costs associated with them. The applicant's proposal seems to be a great way to preserve this historic structure and while also adding another family to the community. Staff recommends approval with the noted conditions in your staff report. And I know that the, the Lewis family is here. Should you have any questions for them?
Any questions for the applicant? All right. Anyone here wish to voice an objection to the request of the Lewis family for the property described as 1003 South Lamar Boulevard? I noticed that Lily Gillespie, Ms. Gillespie is, we have your email. She emailed in and is a adjoining property owner and has voiced her approval of the plans. Is that correct, Ms. Gillespie? She may be muted. We have that in the file, but I noticed that she was on. Any, any more discussion? Any questions for the Lewis family from the audience or the commissioners?
I have a question for staff, sorry.
All right.
Do we have any other letters from any other neighbors for or against? Any other calls or anything?
The, the only letter that staff has received was from Ms. Gillespie, but I do know that the Lowes are here, and I believe in support of the request. And I know Mr. Lewis has been speaking with the neighbors around the property, so I've not received any indication.
Just wondered if we'd officially heard from anyone else.
No.
And the record should reflect that the Lowes have, being an adjacent to or surrounding property owner, have voiced their approval for the plans. All right? Actually, I do have one more quick question.
Ben, in the application, it said that they'll provide capital to beautify and update the property in accordance with the Oxford Historical Committee. Does that just mean, just like any other property, if they're making adjustments or changes, it comes in, in front of preservation?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion as to the special exception request in case number 2741.
Make a motion to approve with the conditions stated.
I have a motion to approve with conditions stated by the planning department. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. All opposed? It has been approved.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, JR.
Ms. Gillespie, thank you for attending via Zoom. All right. Next, we have is case number 2742. Blake Barnes has filed a request for final plant approval for lots 1 through 6 of the Williamsburg subdivision, and it's property located at or in Williamsburg Cove. Gray?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This, this report pertains to a request to amend lot lines of six contiguous lots in a subdivision plot originally recorded in 2009. The subdivision contains six single-family houses along a cul-de-sac west of Jefferson-Davidson Extended. A special exception for six zero lot line units in a preliminary plot were approved by the city in 2006. These are fairly small lots ranging from .14 of an acre to .2 of an acre. Currently, three houses extend over, over property lines. The applicant is requesting the plot amendment so that each house would be within its own property lines. The applicant is also requesting a setback variance that correlates with the proposed amendment, which is the next item on the agenda. The amendment would create gaps in the setback widths between each lot, essentially eliminating the subdivision as a zero lot line development, but also not adhering to current zoning district setback standards. The lot size minimum in the zoning district is 7,200 square feet. Lots 1, 2, 5, and 6, those dimensions would be smaller than allowed currently in the district. Attached are, in the report, with the case report, are letters of approval from other owners in the subdivision that the applicant has deemed potentially adversely affected or directly interested. And as of today, staff has not received any question or complaints from the public regarding this amendment. Related to engineering comments, the highlight from engineering and reflected in the conditions is that staff has provided comments to the applicant's engineer requesting easements for all infrastructure outside of the originally designated right of way. Staff understands the historical issues that exist related to this subdivision and its creation over a decade ago. Staff believes that it is necessary, necessary to amend these lot lines so that each house exists solely on an individual lot. Staff recommends approval of the final plot amendment for lots 1 through 6 of the Williamsburg subdivision with the four conditions stated in the report.
Thank you, Gray.
Yes, sir.
Basically, we are just correcting of mismanaged property lines over the course of however many years, and we're now correcting what they have, what they messed up in the past.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone here tonight wish to speak as to the request for Mr. Barnes to amend his subdivision plot to correct mistakes from the past? All right. Hearing none?
I do have one question.
Certainly.
Oh, and it may be for Paul. I don't know. Will this, once we, if we approve this, do these houses that are on the smaller lots, do they continue as a non-conforming structure, or does this cure that somehow by allowing the smaller lots?
Everybody's bragging on mom or somebody using the microphone. She was bragging what she saw.
How's that?
I think as I understand it, and there's another, there's a variance request that comes after this to try to clear up some of the same issues as well, to, to clear up the lot line issues. As to the, the way they sit in the subdivision, I think this amendment will cure the nonconformity as far as the, the lot configuration.
Okay, but it doesn't cure it as to size? That, for the area that it's in, these lots are now smaller than our 7,200 square foot?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Sure. Right. That's a, it's a pre-existing nonconforming use, so that nonconformity can exist out into the future.
That's right.
Because we changed the ordinance. Sure. Yeah, that's not one that we need to cure because it's not something that has, that was done in contravention of the ordinance as it existed at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for staff or legal?
Just so you know, Paul Cuschenina did join the call just a moment ago, in case there are any questions for the engineer.
Any questions for the engineer? Paul is on.
Paul is on.
All right. Hearing.
Hearing.
Hearing none.
Hearing none.
That's annoying.
That's annoying.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
As to, I'll entertain a motion as to case number 2742. It's the request for final plant approval for the Williamsburg subdivision.
Motion to approve case 2742, subject to staff conditions.
It's a motion to approve staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. It is approved. This brings a second request regarding the same property regarding the Williamsburg subdivision. It's case number 2743. Blake Barnes has filed a request for variance from the front yard build to line minimum inside yard setback minimum, as well as the rear yard setback minimum for properties located at Williamsburg Cove. Gray?
Yes, sir. And I've kind of touched on it a little bit. When the Williamsburg subdivision was constructed, as I understand it, the property was zoned RB, which is, was the two-unit residential, and it allowed for 20-foot front yard setbacks, 10-foot side yard setbacks on one side, and 10-foot rear yard setbacks. A variance to the front, side, and rear yard setbacks is necessary per the amendment that was just approved, as I've mentioned, so that each house is on each individual lot. The preliminary plot approved in 2006, as I previously said, it was zero lot line development, but they also received a five-foot front yard setback variance from 20 feet to 15 feet, and that was granted for lots 2, 3, 4, and 5, and back in 2006. Staff recommends, staff believes that it is necessary to allow the proposed setbacks on these lots, lot lines, so that each house exists on its own lot, and staff recommends approval with the one condition stated in the report.
Thank you, Gray. Any questions? Everybody understand? Anyone here tonight wish to voice an objection as to the variance request by Mr. Barnes as to the Williamsburg subdivision? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Was it something? Did I hear something?
That was my cuff. Sorry.
All right. Sorry. I'll entertain a motion as to case number 2743, the request for variance.
So move.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. It is approved. Moving along, this brings us to case number 2744. Walker and Walker Enterprises, along with Marie Barxdale, have filed a request for an amendment final plot approval for Grand Ridge subdivision Lot 22 and its property located at 1028 Augusta Drive. Robert?
Okay, so the subject property is located on Augusta Drive inside the Grand Oaks Pud. There are two properties in question, Lot 22 of the Grand Ridge subdivision and approximately six-acre tract of unplatted land to the north of that lot. The applicant's proposed transfer a portion of the unplatted land to Lot 22 on the west rear side of the lot and transfer a portion of Lot 22 to the unplatted land on the front or east side of the lot. The effect will be that Lot 22 will increase in size and generally become a more regular rectangular shape, while the unplatted land will gain a little bit more road frontage. The applicant stated that this is a mutually beneficial agreement between the landowners, and currently there is a patio on Lot 22 that is built over the property line, and this plot amendment would bring the patio back inside of the setbacks, and the amended lot will meet all the dimensional standards of the underlying zoning. Engineering has some comments, including requesting a few technical corrections on the proposed plot amendment for Lot 22, which are noted in the staff report. Right, the existing utilities within the site prior to this date, so the section that is inside of the subdivision that will now be part of the unplatted land, would, may have a prescriptive easement and would be permitted to remain as installed. Staff is not aware of any water or sewer utilities within those original setbacks. Staff recommends approval of the final plat as amended for Grand Ridge subdivision Lot 22 with the following conditions. Approval is of the amended final plat by the mayor and board of aldermen. Approval is for the plat as submitted and prior to the case being heard by the mayor and board of aldermen. All technical corrections noted in items 1 to 5 in the staff report should be addressed on the plat.
Thank you, Rob. Basically, we are correcting once again a lot line problem. Okay. Any questions for staff, the applicant, or their representative? Anyone here tonight wish to object to case number 2744, the request for an amended final plat approval as to Grand Ridge subdivision Lot 22? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on case number 2744. Motion to approve. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. It is approved. Moving along, this brings us to case number 2744. Walker and Walker Enterprises, along with Marie Barxdale, have filed a request for an amendment final plat approval for Grand Ridge subdivision Lot 22 and its property located at 1028 Augusta Drive. Robert?
Okay, so the subject property is located on Augusta Drive inside the Grand Oaks Pud. There are two properties in question, Lot 22 of the Grand Ridge subdivision and approximately six-acre tract of unplatted land to the north of that lot. The applicant's proposed transfer a portion of the unplatted land to Lot 22 on the west rear side of the lot and transfer a portion of Lot 22 to the unplatted land on the front or east side of the lot. The effect will be that Lot 22 will increase in size and generally become a more regular rectangular shape, while the unplatted land will gain a little bit more road frontage. The applicant stated that this is a mutually beneficial agreement between the landowners, and currently there is a patio on Lot 22 that is built over the property line, and this plot amendment would bring the patio back inside of the setbacks, and the amended lot will meet all the dimensional standards of the underlying zoning. Engineering has some comments, including requesting a few technical corrections on the proposed plot amendment for Lot 22, which are noted in the staff report. Right, the existing utilities within the site prior to this date, so the section that is inside of the subdivision that will now be part of the unplatted land, would, may have a prescriptive easement and would be permitted to remain as installed. Staff is not aware of any water or sewer utilities within those original setbacks. Staff recommends approval of the final plat as amended for Grand Ridge subdivision Lot 22 with the following conditions. Approval is of the amended final plat by the mayor and board of aldermen. Approval is for the plat as submitted and prior to the case being heard by the mayor and board of aldermen. All technical corrections noted in items 1 to 5 in the staff report should be addressed on the plat.
Thank you, Rob. Basically, we are correcting once again a lot line problem. Okay. Any questions for staff, the applicant, or their representative? Anyone here tonight wish to object to case number 2744, the request for an amended final plat approval as to Grand Ridge subdivision Lot 22? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on case number 2744.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor. It is approved. Next up is a public hearing case number 2745. It's Royal Group LLC, and they've requested preliminary and final plan approval for what is designated as Highway 30 Convenience Store subdivision. It's property located at 86 Highway 30. Gray?
Subject property is located on a narrow one-acre parcel on the south side of Highway 30, directly east of Highway 30 Collision. The applicant received a special exception request to exceed the maximum front yard build to line of 50 feet by 95.77 feet, a total of 145.77 feet from the property line in October of 2020. The planning commission approved the request with a condition made to require an evergreen buffer along the eastern border of the property. A site plan is currently under review for a service station that will include a single store building that has a convenience store and commercial space. The site will be accessed by an existing curb cut off of Highway 30, and the proposed subdivision consists of a single one-acre lot. Engineering had quite a lengthy staff report, some highlights.
Engineering had quite a lengthy staff report, some highlights from that, particularly relate to water and sewer, and those are also reflected in the conditions. Staff states, "The proposed subdivision will be served by campground water as it is located in their service territory and not the city of Oxford territory. City sewer lines are not currently present. A privately-owned onsite sewer treatment system is proposed to manage the sewer but has not received approval from the Department of Health at this time." "City engineering staff will require an easement from the property for a sewer line so that future sewer service can be provided in this annexed area. Given the unknowns regarding the final design, staff also recommends that the subdivision and/or site plan return to the planning commission for public comment regarding the final location of the proposed septic services prior to beginning construction of any building." Staff recommends approval of the preliminary and final plat for Highway 30 Convenience Store subdivision with the six conditions stated in your report. And Rihanna is on the line as well, if you have any, and Jeff Williams is here as well.
Leanne, you there?
I'm here.
Hey, Rihanna. Rihanna, give me, I have a question. Is this, and Jeff, I'm sure is certainly qualified to make, give me this information, probably too, but it's my understanding that currently there is no city services that go that far?
That's correct.
Correct.
And once, once they give us an easement, city runs the sewer, once that happens, they have to connect to city services, correct?
That's.
Within 90 days of us notifying them, yes.
Is there a timeline as to when that will occur?
There is not one at this moment, no.
All right. And I don't know, my question is, is, the way I read this, is it's contingent upon a final plat approval, or construction can't be done until there's approval of where this line is going to be run? Is that correct? Is that the way I read it, or am I wrong?
That's the way I read it, and I have a little bit of a problem with that, because I don't know, I don't know how to do the plat, and I can't do the plat, I can't get my site plan approved.
The, the approval is contingent on where the health, on them getting health department approval and where it's run. And, and a lot of that, the concerns and questions we have are, the way the building is proposed to be laid out in that plat, there's a smaller area where the sewer line can go, and we just want to be sure that, because it's close to that adjacent property, that there's not an issue, and that the adjacent property owner would not have a complaint or, you know, concern with the location of the sewer line. Because even though it may meet the health department standards, they could have an issue with it discharging near their property line.
We'll.
I hate to get tangled up in trying to come back. We have an agreement with the adjacent property owner, they're going to use, they're going to have access through our driveways, I don't think it's going to be a problem with them. As Rihanna said, we're going to be dictated by DOH. They're going to tell us where we can and can't put it. So, you know, to come back is, seems like a severe waste of time. If y'all would give, if you approve it, not saying you will, but if you do, instead of these conditions being hard, give some flexibility so Rihanna and I can work out the details, because some of this stuff doesn't need to go on the plat, some of it does. All the rest of it is a site plan issue. So when it's approved, whether it's on a consent agenda or administrative, somebody will still have a chance to, to, to come back.
Yeah, my question is, Rihanna, if there is no services run and no projected timeline as to when those will be run, are we holding up, and Ben, you may be able to speak to it as well, are we holding up them from construction? Or will we give them a projected, an anticipated, or an estimate of, here's where we believe it's the best area to run it, when it happens?
No, well, there's two, there's two things going on. There are not city services, there's not a city sewer main run, and that, I can't give a timeline on that right now.
Sure.
So, but they are proposing their private septic system, and that's what I feel like the adjacent property owner needs to have an opportunity to be made aware of, because unlike when you connect the city sewer, a city sewer goes in the sewer main, and there's no discharge near an adjacent property, or there's not supposed to be. But with the septic system, even though it's clean and treated, there is a discharge. And so I just, I wanted that adjacent property owner to have an opportunity, and Jeff has stated that they are working with the property owner, and that's information that I didn't have in writing my report, and the commission can consider that as they will. So I, I do know before the final plat goes to the board, we will have to have that approval from the Department of Health, we'll have to have that, because I can't sign that that lot is available.
I think that leaves us wide open to subjective for our neighbor dictating something that we're following state requirements on.
Well, but I think, but Rihanna, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but your question is about the sixth condition, right? The easement for the city sewer, and whether we know where that needs to be now or not?
Oh, I see, that, okay, that issue, now that, they could know, that I agree, that I can't tell them yet, and Jeff may be able to have some insight in where with the property that that would go. I don't have a problem if they say that an easement, that a sewer, you know, a 20-foot wide sewer easement is made available to the city for future sewer, if they want to write that note.
Absolutely.
Without a location, that's fine.
Because I worry about depth, I mean, we're, we're already below street level, and the, the new sewer line that comes in would have to be extremely deep. But that, a note promising to do that, I think would be perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, and that'll be on city to work out where, you know.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, if I had some flexibility to work on some of these notes with her, instead of it being exactly like this, I don't want to have to come by, if it's, you know, if we come up with a different solution other than exactly the way it's worded here.
My other, my other question, Rihanna, is for condition three, can we separate, I mean, can we treat the discharge of the private septic system with the site plan rather than making the plat contingent on it?
Yes, and that was the reason I was trying to say and/or, because I wanted, I wanted you as the commission, you, you answer direct, you know, I mean, you are responsible for the, the public participation part, and I wanted to be sure, y'all could choose and hear the case in full, and Jeff comment to the information he provides as well to consider that. So I, I don't have an, an issue with it just being tied to the site plan.
Okay.
That's fine.
Right, that avoids them having to come basically to two different meetings for two different things and be delayed more. So, okay, I got it. So basically, we can amend and just say, look, it, it will return on site plan, at which time you will have your sewer services and everything on there.
And I'll have a little better idea of where I can tell her we could give an easement that would be good for both of us.
Okay, all right. Any more questions?
Just a technical one, will the plat have to be amended once we know where that easement will be?
I would hope that before I do the final, I could add that on there.
Okay.
Because I won't be able to do the final until the site plan.
Yeah. That's right. Any additional comments, questions? Anyone here tonight wish to voice an opinion one way or the other on 2745, the preliminary and final plat approval? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion as to case number 2745, understanding that we have a slight amendment to what seems to be, well, really, 3 and 6, as discussed.
Motion to approve, subject to staff conditions, but with condition 3 taken out completely, and condition 6 to provide a note in the plat that an easement will be provided for city sewer.
All right. Everyone understand the motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. It is approved. Thank you, Jeff. Public hearing for case number 2746, it's Brian Hayden, and he has filed a request for a special exception as to resident, as to a residential common interest development for property located at 1206 South 16th Street. Ben?
Thank you. This property is located on the west side of South 16th Street, just north of Garfield Avenue. Measures 0.66 acres on a deep lot that has one home located near the front of the lot. The property's zone, traditional suburban residential, it's located in the Neighborhood Conservation overlay district, and it is also in the Southmore Historic District. The applicant's requesting a special exception to allow a residential common interest development that would allow two additional units to be constructed on the rear portion of this lot behind the existing dwelling. The home on the property was built circa 1900 and is considered contributing resource in the district. This portion of South 16th Street in Garfield, however, has many properties primarily for rental, including multiple dwellings in a single parcel or lot. Residential common interest development is a special exception when a property is located in a historic district, when it is located in the Conservation Overlay District, and when it is in an existing subdivision, in the sense that the property is located in two of those three circumstances. The applicant would like the ability to construct two additional detached single-family homes in the rear portion of this site. Because the property is not able to comply with the land development code requirements to subdivide the property, the only other mechanism that is available to facilitate this development is the residential common interest development. The site does slope away from South 16th Street, making the two proposed new units minimally visible from the street. The site plan is currently under review by the Site Plan Review Committee, but it does propose a total of 12 parking spaces on-site. This, this plan was considered for certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission in March for the design of the structures. It did provide some comments related to the discussion, but overall, the, the commission was supportive of the request. It was granted, the COA was granted, and, but we did have two commissioners that voted to deny that request. Vision 2037 did contemplate the potential for infill developments to be created, but it should be done in a way that insurance compatibility with the neighborhood protects the community character, and in this instance, the development proposal adequately addresses the three place, I'm sorry, the three basic elements of good infill development, which is access, parking location, and building placement and orientation. The proposal indicates two means of ingress and egress. Parking will be provided on-site and located in the side or the rear of the property, and the new buildings will be situated at the rear of the site, which minimizes the impact from the street. For the reasons stated above, staff finds the development proposal to be consistent with the existing character of the neighborhood, and the newly constructed homes will utilize the existing topography to minimize the visual impact from South 16th and provide necessary off-street parking facilities for residents. Staff recommends approval with the, of the requested special exception with the conditions in the staff report. And Mr. Hayden is here, should you have any additional questions for him?
Any questions?
Ben, I do have.
Well, I, mine is more a comment, I don't, the applicant might want to speak to it, or Ben might want to speak to it, but the number one, granting the special exception will not adversely affect the public interest. I think South 16th is extremely crowded. Because I have a child that age, I've actually looked at rental property on that street, it is the party street in Oxford. And the houses, the students have names for the houses, they're, you know, it is, and I, I don't know that adding two more units onto that, I don't see anything wrong with the way it's put on there engineering-wise, I don't see anything, it's not that. It's adding two more rental units to that street. There are actual residents farther down the street in the dead end who actually live on that street and have to have no choice but to drive through this with all the, you know, you can put all the parking you want to there, but they're still going to have friends come over to spend the night, and, you know, there's, it's street parking on that street, no matter how much you put in there. And it's, that just, I don't know. Don't exactly have a question.
Comments or findings?
I got a question. All right, so Ben, I had to, you know, go back to our 2037 plan and see what we said about infill, because I know it played a part. And I know one of the things that we did say is that it's generally inappropriate in the traditional neighborhood conservation place type. But isn't that what this area is?
In the neighborhood conservation overlay?
The traditional neighborhood conservation place type.
Well, this is traditional.
Like I was looking, it, it references a map, and I was trying to compare the map with this property right here, and it looks like it falls in to the area that we say, well, that's not really where we do want it. So really, my bigger question is, where do we see infill occurring? How far, are, are we looking at in the urban core? Are we looking outside the urban core? Are we looking at transitional spots? How do y'all see infill sort of playing a role moving forward?
Yeah, I think, to your point about vision 2037, I think one of the examples that was provided in there was actually a property that was in the Conservation Overlay District, so I don't necessarily know that it was speaking particularly to that. There was that example that was on North 14th, kind of near Handy Andy on the left-hand side, so there were several different iterations of a design at that location. I think there are, there, you know, Duncan, there are a lot of factors. I know the Affordable Housing Commission is looking for ways to find additional infill opportunities that could provide some relief to affordability challenges. I don't know that, you know, that's going to be applicable in every circumstance, you know, the closer that you get to the downtown because of, you know, the high cost of land, I think that, and not only the high cost of land, but you don't have a lot of larger, larger properties. You know, so I think you're probably going to find a lot more opportunities in the transition, and maybe even in the, in the edge of, of the area, but I would, I would think probably more in the transition, all areas outside, you know, south of the 6 corridor, you know, not necessarily in the heart. This particular instance is one that I think Jeff's been working on with us for, maybe just prior to the pandemic, maybe right, in the, in the early stages of the pandemic, we, you know, they brought this, and, you know, we, we had to take it before the Historic Preservation Commission because that, you know, that certainly matters, and, and it's a, it's a question that they're also asking as well. And, you know, where are these appropriate areas, and how do we keep intact some of our historic neighborhoods? Because there's also, there's that interest too in vision 2037 of protecting our, our older established neighborhoods as well.
And that, and that's what I'm kind of wrestling with here, because in, and I'll read what it says in here, and I'll probably say, in general, they, they will be found in older neighborhoods outside historic districts and near the transitional edges, transitional edges of abutting traditional neighborhood and urban center and urban corridor place types. Infill is generally inappropriate in the traditional neighborhood conservation place type as illustrated on, you know, that map.
Right.
So, I guess that's what I was trying to understand, is, is this something that's, we're okay with in the historical sort of districts? Or is it on the outside of the historical district sort of transit? Because I, I kind of echo some of what Judy was saying, in that if I have, if I'm a neighbor on Beanland, and I look up and all of a sudden in my backyard, where I've got some trees and some buffer for my neighbor, they're building two more homes, you know, I'm kind of raising an eyebrow a little bit, so.
And I'll also say, when you drive down this street, there are, you can tell that these houses are pretty old houses, a lot, lots of them. Some of them are, are not well taken care of right now, but once you put, if you drive down and you see, oh, there are two more houses built behind that house now, there are two more, and there are some already there. That sort of just brands it, that, you know, that's it, it's rental property forever. It's rental property forever, and maybe that's fine, I don't know. I'm just saying, you know, it's creating, it's making it more of what it already is, and I feel like it's already a problem on that street.
Kind of like we're surrendering it.
Yeah, exactly. We're saying, yeah, that's fine, students can have this whole street and do whatever you want on it. And it leaves the people down at the end of the street, you know? I feel bad for them.
But it's in the South Amherst Historic District, right?
Yeah, it's the very last property in the district. The property to the south is outside of that district.
I don't want this to devolve into a discussion of where college students should live, but I guess my question is, how long has this particular section of this neighborhood had that characteristics, though?
A very long time. I'm not saying it hasn't. It has.
So I guess, I mean, at the same, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Judy, but at the same time, you know, has the, have we already passed that point?
Well, I don't know that that means that I should vote to contribute to making it worse.
Sure, yeah, fair.
Because it already is.
Sure.
Does that mean we should say, okay, we can make it worse with two more units? Or 10 more units for the next person, or whoever it is?
Sure, no, I mean, and I guess for me, then, the question, you know, this whole concept of infill, then, I mean, to me, that's the point that is most interesting to me on this, is just this concept of infill, to begin with, not necessarily units per se, but just this idea of infill. And again, that's not a question, that's just a comment.
And the role that it plays, I guess, you know, whether it's the, so it's the last house in the South Amherst Historic District, but we're saying it's okay.
But there's probably a reason that that house got put in there and the next one didn't. When they did the survey, they deemed that that house, there was a reason they wanted that house in there.
And a quarter of them.
And I love the students living in and amongst us. That's what I love about Oxford, but they live in and amongst us, and I feel like when we start having sections that are only students, that that is not good for Oxford.
South 16th is a disaster. It really is. I mean, it is.
It is.
From the concept of litter and garbage and things like that, I mean, I get it. And that was my big thing, is adding to the chaos. And again, Jeff, it's not a planning issue at all. I understand it at all. It's more of a...
I'd like to make a few comments.
Sure. You have the floor.
I totally respect everything you said. I don't necessarily disagree with any of the things you're saying, but I would take into account, and I know this case stands alone, it doesn't have anything to do with what's happened previously, but I think Mr. King was correct. There are other infill houses on that street. Probably, I don't know the exact number, but I'm guessing somewhere upwards of 80% on that entire street are rental. I'm reinforcing what you're saying, but I would say this, if you've looked at the property as it stands now, there's a dilapidated garage that's coming down. We're going to create space to keep these kids off the street, even the new ones. So if you look at it right now, they're parking in front of the house, parking on the streets, on the sides, or we're going to make it look better. Is it going to add traffic? Obviously so. We're adding units, so that adds traffic. But I think as far as providing a better situation for the street as a whole, as far as parking and the look, I think it benefits the community, other than being such a detriment. And the fact that it's always going to be rentals, that's the reason we make a common interest. It's just like a condominium. Somebody wants to buy one of those units and live in it themselves, it may be students, it may be a parent buying. I'm just saying, it's not strictly rental, it can be sold as a living unit.
Every unit is separate.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments? Anyone here tonight wish to make a comment in regards to case number 2746, this special exception request?
I think, in general, you know, Commissioner King brought up the infill discussion. I think in general, there's a desire in the Vision 2037 to provide more diverse housing and more density. I guess where I get hung up on this one is related to a Commissioner Radel problem, which is if we create a common interest development here, it'll provide a couple of extra dwelling places, but the future of that property, given where it is right now, I just wonder who's likely to occupy that main residence from now on with two related residents behind it. I mean, it wouldn't, it sounds to me like it sets it up for students, because it'd be a tough sell for somebody to buy a house on that street as a single-family house if it's part of the CID compared to everything else around it, that's single-family homes.
Well, in thinking that too, I know we don't work on precedent, but probably every landlord on that street has property, those are deep lots. We're going to be filling the next one, the next one, the next one.
Is, I'm assuming, Ben, that the main structure, the current structure, is rental?
Yeah. Current.
Yeah. Okay. Any more comments, questions? Yes, sir?
I will add a comment to the point about the deep lots.
Do you want to come up here, Brian? Please.
You can come up. This is the way our record is clear. If you would please, sir, give your name.
Brian Hayden.
Yes, sir.
I will say, to the point of the deep lots, we actually did a pretty extensive amount of research and pulled up on Delta's computer system just to look at, you know, which one of those properties are homesteaded. We even went by, and it should be in the packet here, and we indicated a little chart and a list of how many of the other addresses on that same side of the street and on the opposite side of the street already have multiple buildings on those same properties. And it was the vast majority of them.
Current properties with infill already?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. And we even did an Excel sheet behind that to say exactly how many. Some of them have two, some of them have three. There was one that had five. There's, it's pretty well all up and down through there. And again, what we're trying to do is clean it up, clear it up, and get stuff off of the street. So that's awesome to see.
I thought you were going to get up and make additional presentations.
Just in case you had a question.
Sorry, I'm sorry. You look like you're ready to get into the fray. Okay. All right. Hearing no additional comments from the commission or the audience members, Mr. Hayden, I appreciate your comments. I will entertain a motion as to case number 2746.
I'll make a motion to approve case 2746, subject to staff conditions.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor? It's denied by a 4-3 vote. This brings us now to case number 2747. Josh and Jennifer Samuels, they have filed a request for final plat approval for undesignated land in Woodland Hills subdivision and Ammondale subdivision. It's one single lot, Lot 9. It's property located at 100 Longest Road. We have, I think both of these, understanding what we know, but I'm going to call as well, I think they're due to be heard together, although they will be separate cases for voting purposes. And it's case number 2748. It's a request for preliminary and final plat approval for contingent upon 2747, the newly formed Vivian subdivision property located at 100 Longest Road. Ben?
Thank you. This property is located in the southwest corner of Vivian Street and Longest Road intersection, measures about four tenths of an acre. It's zoned traditional suburban residential. It's located in the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. The property contains a single-family home. It was constructed around 1981. The Ammondale subdivision was recorded in 1939, and Woodland Hills subdivision was recorded in 1953. The property was originally, so this property was originally a part of Lot 9 of the Ammondale subdivision, and that original lot line runs through the middle of the existing house. The remainder of the property was originally part of the Woodland Hills subdivision, but it was not associated with any particular lot, and it did include a drainage easement, a 30-foot drainage easement on the property, which remains today, although a portion of the house extends into this easement. The applicants are requesting to amend both subdivisions, to remove this property from each of the subdivisions in order to create a new parcel. And then subsequent requests in case 2748 is to create a two-lot subdivision called the Vivian. The Mississippi subdivision law requires that the applicant proposing any changes in the plat subdivision notify all persons that are adversely affected and directly interested in the modification, and allow them to express their concerns. The identification of who these people are is left up to the discretion of the applicant. To date, staff, at the time of the writing of this report, staff had not received this information from the applicant's engineer, even though at that time he was working to speak with people in the neighborhood that they determined to be adversely affected in each of the subdivisions. And we'll come back to that in a second. And engineering did provide us with some additional comments. I know we've received multiple emails, I believe, three emails that have included as part of the record in here from residents. And then at about 3 o'clock, I've provided you with an updated memo, although regarding update for case 27 should be 47. At 3:03, the planning department staff did receive an email from the applicant's engineer, and it contained a copy of the letter that was provided to residents that they had determined to be adversely affected, a map that shows the properties that they have determined to be those that are adversely or directly interested. And then, and then we also received letters, a total of seven response letters. So there were 19 properties that they believe that were adversely affected or directly interested in this modification. Seven, I'm sorry, one signature was in support of the modification. Six signatures were of disapproval, and then there were not responses from 12 property owners. Inside your memo, you'll see the state subdivision regulations, and I'd like to point out subsection 4, which states that the failure to gain approval from the party's name shall prohibit the board of supervisors or governing authorities from altering or vacating the map or plat or any part thereof. And as a result of this newly provided information, we previously recommended approval, but we have changed our recommendation to denial of the requested amendment. And I think it's, you know, it's worth noting that, you know, we've dealt with a few housekeeping items tonight from issues related to, you know, years ago, and I think when we look at this, you know, the existing conditions that are provided in the materials here, I think it goes without question that this needs to be addressed, right? I think, you know, one way or another, this needs to be corrected to, because as it stands right now, if somebody wanted to provide, make an addition to the house, somebody could purchase the home and live in it as is, but if somebody wanted to come in and make an addition, or to propose to demolish the house and build a new house, staff would not be able to approve any plans at this time, or what would be constructed would be very minimal, and because your setback line would be drawn from the original lot line of Lot 9. In case 2748, case 2748, you'll see, it's a request for the subdivision, which creates two lots called the Vivian. And as noted in the conditions of this report, it is dependent upon the approval of case 2747. But the two lots that would be created, Lot 1 would measure about, sorry, 7,500 square feet, and then Lot 2 would be, sorry, 9,500, just about 9,500 square feet. And according to the subdivision regulations, you know, the size, the width, the lot widths, the setbacks that are indicated on there, it does comply. The plat does indicate the drain easement that previously existed in the Woodland Hills subdivision. Covenants are required for subdivision, but we have not received any covenants. I know the applicant's engineer and I have had conversations related to covenants, and so I'll let him speak. We do have a condition inside of our staff report here pertaining to covenants, that they be provided to the planning department prior to the issuance of any permit, should this be approved. Engineering did provide comments related to water and sewer, stormwater and grading, access sidewalk and drain easements. And so staff's recommendation would be approval with the conditions listed in the report, which does include, you know, the approval of case 2747 by the mayor and board of aldermen. There's a total of 10 conditions of approval. I'm sure that...
Thank you, Ben.
Questions, Ben?
Kevin, do you want to make a record?
Good evening. Just to clarify a few things, maybe I didn't make it clear enough to staff, in a plat amendment, when I start looking at who could be directly interested or adversely affected, I start out with lots that are next to said lot, or lots that can be seen from, you know, from that lot. Without knowing that there could be someone within that area who may consider themselves to not be affected, so I don't think I was probably saying that I thought there were 19 people that would be, there were 19 possible people that I think could be. I canvassed the neighborhood, I dropped letters off, talked to many of them, talked to three or four of them who did not submit anything back. We got, as Ben said, we got seven back. One was for approval, six was for disapproval. So I would consider that we have seven people, at least of the first 19. There may be some more in that 19 that got my letter and chose to come here tonight and speak, and I'm sure they'll get a chance, so I could be wrong in that. But as I talk to the property owners, a lot of confusion, I think, came from the two-lot subdivision, which is the separate case from the plat amendment. You know, as Ben said, this lot, well, this piece of land, this property has been split down the middle, half in Woodland Hills, half in Ammondale, and this house has been there since, I guess, the early 80s. A lot of the comments I got that I'd just like to stake for the record, there were three main concerns I got. One was that some of the folks in the neighborhood wanted to see one lot built, one house built per lot, which is what the Woodland Hills covenant says. And we would agree, there are two lots there, we would like to see one lot per house, one house per lot. We would like to see one lot per house, one house per lot. The problem is how that lot line is laying in there. And both lots are very close to the two proposed lots as far as square footage, but a north-south lot line just makes more sense as opposed to one that's running kind of east-west. It's a very long, narrow lot. It would stick the driveway out on to Vivian, which I think is too close to price. So that was the first thing that I got, I heard a lot of are, we want one house per lot. And again, we agree there are two lots there. The second thing I heard a lot of is the concern about being rental. The, my client plans to build two single-family homes, about 2,500 square feet each, consistent with the style of the neighborhood, does not plan to rent them, does plan to sell them. You know, of course, he can't guarantee what the next person will do. But there are at least four or five other rentals and maybe more in those 19. It's lots that I had marked out to go start talking to folks. Matter of fact, the lot directly to the south and directed to the north is rental. So having a rental doesn't change the nature of the neighborhood, but again, that's not the plan at this, you know, time, but we can't guarantee what happens in the future. And then I guess the last thing I heard a lot of is the creation of a two-lot subdivision inside of two older neighborhoods and two older subdivisions. You've got a two-lot subdivision that can have their own covenants and do whatever they want to. The applicant desires to stay in harmony with the neighborhood. And when we submit the covenant, if we get that far, they will match or exceed what the Woodland Hills covenants already have in it. We could not find any covenants for Amadele, it was in the 30s. We did find covenants for Woodland Hills and the applicant is very agreeable to take those covenants so that it keeps in the harmony of the neighborhoods. I just think the confusion was, we're about to build a two-lot subdivision, an old subdivision and make our own covenants and do condos or whatever, but that's not the case. And at the appropriate time, I think the applicant would like to speak as well. That's all I have. Glad to take any questions from anyone from y'all or from in the audience.
I have a question in general for you or Ben. Why do we need a new subdivision? Even say we did say, yes, it's two lots, let's split them the other direction, now it's two lots this direction. Why can those two lots not be in the Amadele subdivision, I mean, in one of the other subdivisions? Why does it need to be a new one?
I don't think it has to be. I think it can be, but I think they could also go and apply for it to be in the Amadele or apply for it to be in Woodland Hills. They've just chosen to create a two-lot subdivision.
Well, in the, it all seems to be confusion, but in the comments that I've gotten or people who have called me, the new subdivision seems to be sort of a concerning part to people. So I just started thinking, why does it have to be a new subdivision anyway?
I think, you know, staff's had multiple conversations as it relates to, you know, this property. And, you know, I don't, I think where we keep coming to is that, yes, it could be done that way. It could be amended to be in the Amadele subdivision, it could be amended to be in the Woodland Hills subdivision. But, you know, it's clear to us that this property is not necessarily functioning the way that it was originally intended as for either one of these subdivisions. And, you know, so through that course of those conversations, we ultimately said, you know, maybe it's easiest and cleanest to bring it out of the subdivision and do it that way. And, you know, to that point, I think it can be done a myriad of ways. It just seemed that that was the cleanest.
Ben, let me interrupt you. Could you explain what you mean by it's not, you know, performing?
Functioning the way.
Yeah, yeah. Could you explain? What do you mean by that exactly?
Yeah, well, I mean, the, I don't think the subdivision's contemplated a piece, a house being on this property the way it is right now, as originally intended, because the southern portion of the property was the rear portion of the Amadele subdivision Lot 9. And the northern portion of that property, it wasn't even a lot in Woodland Hills subdivision. And so, you know, so it's, you know, the circumstances have changed, you know? And, you know, in 1981, you know, somewhere or another, prior to 1981, you know, the property was acquired and a house was built on it. And, you know, I think.
The house is in two separate subdivisions.
Yeah, that's it.
What, sorry, what is the minimum lot size for the Woodland Hills subdivision?
For the zoning, based on the zoning, it's 7,500 square feet for this.
If this happened, these would fit that, what's in that subdivision already?
It fits what's the zoning of that property. Yes. So Lot 1 is 7,500 square feet and Lot 2, which would be at the intersection of Vivian, and longest would be 9,500 square feet.
Let me understand also as to, it's parcel 20 and 21, 19, and 18 all adjoining in some fashion, correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, Paul, as I read the statute in my practice, when the Mississippi Legislature says you shall, it shall, that means it's out of our discretion, because the way I see it, they have no approval from 17, excuse me, from 18, 19, or 21.
So this is one of those statutes that we, yeah, shall means shall, answer to your first question, correct. Imploys a lack of discretion. This is one of those statutes that we kind of pick for clues on how to operate exactly though, because we don't have any good cases on how this is. So step one is, if you read subsection four of the statute, it says that one of the items that the applicant comes to you with is the names of the people who are interested, directly interested or adversely affected. And then the next step is that all those people give their written consent. One would assume, I mean, a reasonable person, I think, would assume that immediately adjacent lots would be the most likely to be directly interested and adversely affected. But there's no specific, there's no law that says that that is the case or identifies a, you know, a certain geographical range in which you are definitely directly interested and adversely affected. And what the AG has told us is that it's actually a factual finding for the zoning authorities to make as to whether a person who claims to be interested or impacted or a person that the applicant claims not to be actually is. If you make that factual finding that, for example, an immediately adjacent lot is directly interested and adversely, directly interested or adversely impacted, and there is not written approval from that person, at that point, I think you're correct, the shall kicks in and it's almost a jurisdictional bar. You can't take it up at all.
Right. Well.
I guess.
I have a couple of questions.
Is there any, if anybody can provide, and we'll certainly have public comment in just a second, we're not going to forget you, I promise. I don't see how an adjoining lot owner or parcel owner could not be considered adversely affected or in any way at least or interested in the outcome. I mean, that's just me. I mean, that's, I guess, if you tell me we have to have a factual finding, then we can have that, but that, I would propose that it, at the very least, the three adjoining lots have an interest in what happens to this parcel.
I think that's an eminently defensible position.
Yeah. I mean, if somebody disagrees, please let me know, but that's, I'm not the arbiter of facts here, I'm just proposing, that's the way I see it.
If not that individual, then who? I mean, so, that's, you know, I agree, we need to get this cleaned up regardless. I guess, and there has been a lot of confusion and there's been a lot of dissent, you know, is the dissent, like you said, Judy, the idea of another subdivision? Is the dissent that there are two homes? Is the dissent that we're modifying the plat to clean it up? You know, and I think that, I would just like a little clarification on that because I do think that, so.
We're going to, we're going to get there. And I'm going to, anybody else from the commission?
Yeah, I still have a couple of questions.
All right.
I mean, the first one is back to that clarification about the statute. I mean, it says the board of supervisors or the governing authority. Since this has to go to the board of aldermen regardless, are we considered the governing authority or can we still recommend that it go forward? This is not indicating a direction, but as a point of clarification, could we still recommend that it go forward and have the board of aldermen address whether or not there's consent from the neighbors?
Yeah, I mean, under the ordinance, y'all's consideration of this is the same as any other subdivision. You're making a recommendation only, unless the applicant drops it, it's going to go on the board's agenda.
So just to clarify, there's nothing like, there's nothing preventing us from going through our normal motions here. The shall doesn't apply to us, is what I'm getting to.
The shall applies to the city.
Right.
That's right.
You are correct that you are not, y'all are not the governing authorities. The mayor and board are the governing authorities.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
But your recommendation is based on the same standards that they would consider in making that decision.
We would never recommend they do something illegal. And then.
And they wouldn't do it if you did.
So my second question is basically what Commissioner Gray just brought up, which is if the applicant is willing to adopt the covenants of one of the existing subdivisions, has that, has a proposal with the same dividing it up into two parcels instead of one and putting it in Woodland Hills and taking those covenants, has that been given to the neighbors as something for maybe more palatable?
I don't know the answer to that. I think if you look at the old Woodland Hills plat, the conceptual problem, I know that Ben and I talked about, is that the, so the northern part of Lot 9 out of Amadele, I mean, that was a piece of Amadele, right? The chunk that was maybe in Woodland Hills or maybe not is just a piece, right? And so if it was in one of the other of the subdivisions more, I mean, one would think that it would be Amadele, but it's not facing the right way to be in Amadele. So, yeah, I mean, there's no reason you couldn't do that if you're amending the whole Woodland Hills plat.
Yeah, I think it only addresses half of what I understand the neighbors' concerns to be, which would be a separate subdivision governed by two households. I mean, whether they're okay with splitting it, but I think the size of the lots is still in keeping with both of the subdivisions even after the split.
Kevin, do you have something else to add?
No, I was just going to say, it's just food for thought, but parcel number 19, which is directly adjacent to the south, it was late today around 4 o'clock, so y'all may have seen it, but I got a letter or the form from the property owner, that's a rental. Disapproved was not marked, approved was not marked, want more information was not marked. There was a note that said, I'm a property owner, but I don't live there, and the residents that live there should speak. So someone who's adjacent could be considered not directly affected.
I understand.
It's a strange deal.
All right. Is there any more questions from the commission?
Yes. Should we talk about at all, or should we look at board alderman's side? I think we would be guessing guidance or something like this to define what's an interested party or what's a disinterested party, because no matter what we do, we're not going to approve some of them. I think at least let them know, or maybe we need to establish a board, that needs to be set first.
Sure. I think that there are people out here who would consider themselves interested parties regardless of where they sit or where their parcel is, but we're going to hear from them in just a second.
And just on a historical note, and part of the difficulty with this is that it really is fact-dependent, right? Every time we see these, I mean, sometimes you've got a very small subdivision and there are only two other lots that could join it. Sometimes you've got a little subdivision that's still, all the parcels are owned by the same landowner, so the application itself is sufficient. We had a case out of Windsor Falls a few years ago where somebody was coming for a plat amendment to swap out some common property with a privately held lot. So a house would be built on what used to be common property and then the private lot would be held out as common property. And we actually were leaning towards the fact that every lot in a subdivision might be interested at that point because they all have an interest in the common property. You know, they have some kind of undivided interest in that. So it's tough to get any rule that tells you exactly how it goes because these, especially when you get into a position where when you're trying to clean something up, something's already gone wrong, so there's some screwiness already with a lot in there somewhere.
Yeah, at some point in time, this has got to be fixed regardless of how, you just can't have a subdivision line going right through a house. So it's got to be cleaned up one way or the other. All right. Any commission before we get to the audience?
Not a question, just a comment, because I hadn't realized until today, because we often have cases where, you know, we ask, you know, if any adjacent property owners have, you know, comments or questions like that earlier case today on Jefferson Extended. And, you know, the difference here is that we're dealing with a subdivision, and that's why the neighbors' comments are more definitive. And have we had a case like this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We've had plenty of cases. I don't think we've had one where there was overwhelming lack of support among the people who responded.
I know there were a few in country club and we were cleaning that up.
Yeah, we've had, I don't know that we've ever, we've had many controversial cases like this. We have a lot where people are typically making larger lots, right? So property owner, two property owners, they bought a lot between the two of them, and we've amended subdivision lines to, you know, to be like that. That's most often the case. We have had a couple in the past country club where somebody's tried to modify and make a smaller lot for an existing accessory dwelling unit that was there that was a couple years ago. So we do get these and even occasionally we find them in commercial districts too. We've had a couple occasions, but, you know, that being said, we, you know, we typically go through the process, you'll find very similar forms that are like this, and not all the time, you know, do you receive responses back. You know, you have a lot of property owners that don't live here or, you know, getting in contact with them can be, you know, quite challenging. So, but we try and provide the same system every single time that we go through this.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the commission? All right. Anyone from the audience wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you could come forward, give us your name and your address, please. Step right up here so we'll have it for the record.
So my name is Mary Coonley and my husband Roger and I live at 346 Vivian Street, which is just up the street and it's around the Vivian Street turn about a block from the property in question. And y'all, I think that we believe, first of all, that on the zoning map, there may have been a mistake concerning the property at 100 longest, because as you know, in the very recent past, our neighborhood petitioned for and was granted permission to be designated residential estate where the lots are 15,000 square feet. where the lots are 15,000 square feet. That corner of Longest should have been within this designation, we believe. It seems there might have been a mistake on the zoning map, and we wonder if you might take the time to research that. Secondly, Martha Elkin's former home at 100 Longest has been a single-family residence on what was considered to be one lot for the more than 35 years we have lived in that neighborhood. Other homes that have been built across two lots have been granted permission to be rezoned as one lot. So, we wonder if Martha Elkin's former property lot might be redrawn to be a single-family lot in the Woodland Hills subdivision. There is precedence for doing this. We are opposed to that space being used for two houses each on a lot. Those two lots could only be 7,200 square feet. The setback requirements for such lots would be different than for the other homes in our neighborhood. No matter how pretty those homes that were built there, they would look out of place in our neighborhood, and certainly would not have room for the yard space that would fit in with our neighborhood. Roger and I would like you to please take the time to consider the implications on the neighborhood of the requests being considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooney. We'll make your, a copy of your letter, we'll put it in the file. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is William Dunn. My wife Carol and I own the property across the street at 128 Vivian, and I guess we would be impacted by this because we like the neighborhood. It has a nice, single-family character. We'd hate to see the character of the neighborhood change. There's always been one home there, as long as we've been there, 17 years. So, as far as dividing it into two lots, we're certainly opposed to that. The other proposal to make a separate subdivision, a standalone subdivision, we can't really support that. We're, our property is large, we could put, based on the size of, one of the lots that they proposed, a sixth of an acre, we could put 12 to 14 houses on our lot. If you allow this person to do that, we could request a separate subdivision. So, I don't think that's appropriate. We, there is a precedent for merging two lots, it's been set, three lots into two. We allowed Jamie Leggett and Anne Fair to merge three lots into two, so Jamie could build a nice house that adjoins our property. So, we are opposed to both proposals, and I hope you consider our comments. I did email you, I hope they got there, I don't know whether they did or not, so.
Yes, sir, we got it.
You're welcome to use that if you'd like. Could I ask one question? I mean, there's this talk about the lot, the two lots that are in front of us. How much of, or what's a proportion of the quote "lot," or the parcel that's there that's in Amadele, and the park that's in Woodlong Hills, or Woodland Hills? Because if you look at the maps, there's very little of the property in Amadele.
I, I can't give you definitive square feet, but I would say that the majority of it is, the majority would fall within Woodland Hills. Kevin, do you have an answer to that?
Yeah.
Woodland Hills is the northern one.
The two lots that are there, one lot's 7,898 square feet, the other is 9,125. Give me a second, I can tell you which belongs.
I'm gonna guess the 9,000's Woodland Hills.
I mean, that's, I've looked at maps, and it looks like there's only a small part of it that's in Amadele.
Here, Mr. Dunn, I've got it right here.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
There it is.
Anyone else, while they discuss that, as an aside, does anyone else wish to make a comment? Alright. Any additional questions or comments from the commission?
Ben, could you speak to Mr. Dunn's comment about anybody dividing up their lot and creating a separate subdivision? I mean, this is unique, just because this happens to be bisected by two pre-existing subdivisions. No one else could just take their lot and divide it into two. Could you respond to that?
Could I just, well, one thing, I don't want anybody to gloss over is it's currently two lots that are one property.
Right.
Right? So, the fact that there's one house on it doesn't change the fact it's platted as two lots currently. What, what this proposal is just doing is reconfiguring the two lots, and then deciding which subdivision that we part of, one of the pre-existing ones or a new one.
Well, I think that that's the difference in this, is it, it's not two lots. You know, the Woodland Hills was not a numbered lot, it's just property. It's almost as if it's common space inside of the subdivision. It was not designated as a lot according to the original, original subdivision, or to any subdivision that we can find. The only, the only lot that exists, or a fraction of a lot, is for the Amadele subdivision, which is the, I guess, the majority, according to Kevin, the majority of the property that's, that's in this, you know, of the subject property. So, I mean, I think that that's the uniqueness of this particular instance, right? To, to your point, or your question, you know, Marvin, Mr. Dunn stated that the property owner to the north of his property could subdivide that property into 13 lots. I mean, assuming that that person's part of the, the Woodland Hills subdivision, I mean, this would go through that same process, and he'd be an adjacent property owner. And from what I'm hearing, this commission suggests is, an adjacent, adjoining property owner would be as interested as anybody else in a modification, and so he would have the right. And I think that that's the intent behind the subdivision statute that exists at the state, to be able to, to have property owners be able to protect their property, and protect their interests in their property as it pertains to, you know, modifications or whatever. And so, I think, you know, hi- his right to speak up and objection of that instance would certainly happen. But in, in this instance, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's...
Well, I think my, my specific question was, was not putting additional lots on your land, but creating a separate subdivision.
Creating separate.
That's, that's what, that's what I was saying.
Again, I think the same process would have to take place. You'd have to amend it, and if, that's what I said, I'm assuming that it's in Woodland Hills.
Say that again, Paul?
So, let me, part of the, part of the disconnect here is the, the Woodland Hills piece of this lot, we're not 100% sure what's going on, on the Woodland Hills plat, right? If you look at the northern portion of this parcel that we're talking about here today, there's a 30-foot drain easement that comes down from the roadbed of Longest, and then there's a little triangle that just says Cullen Land. And it doesn't have a number, there's no designator to it. And then when you go over to the east, across Vivian, there's, there are other swaths of land that are just designated as Cullen Land. And then there's some other lots up to the, the north of this other easement in here. So, you know, the question about whether somebody could subdivide that or not, it depends on whether it exists in the subdivision to start with. If somebody has some of this potentially unplatted land that is reflected on the original plat, but is not actually part of the subdivision, then they, they could subdivide it. I mean, there's, there's nothing that would stop them from doing it. I think houses have been built, built back there in a way that's inconsistent with that. I mean, I think they are on these, these big parcels. But that, yeah, that, that's part of what makes this one so weird is, that's not really part of the subdivision plat, you know? And it's just that little weird fingernail there on the west side. Over there on the east side, it, there's a lot of that that doesn't fall within the subdivision.
So, Paul, just for my own edification, the subdivision and the identity of a subdivision with covenants is what really gives the protection to avoid the scenario that Marvin just laid out, correct?
To the extent that those covenants exist and are binding on each parcel that everybody thinks they are and are enforced, yes.
But if we get into some of these other areas that do not have subdivision covenants, and I'm really kind of thinking some, back to our previous case, kind of the more historical areas, they don't have necessarily those same protections in place.
That's right, there are a lot of these subdivisions that either don't have covenants, or they were never recorded, maybe somebody remembers them, and that's why these subdivision amendment issues get tricky when you get outside of subdivisions that are less than 20 years old, right? Because when you have a subdivision that doesn't have a modern, modern functioning HOA, and everybody's being assessed, and, you know, everybody knows exactly when the lot was carved out, because it was within the last 10 or 15 years, it's pretty straightforward. You may have to come back and correct a, a lot line because of a surveying issue like y'all did tonight. But here, it's, it's really a matter of figuring out what exactly is or is not within the subdivision, separate and apart from what people's colloquial expectations are as far as what's in their neighborhood, or what's in their subdivision.
I'm thinking about also like Country Club, I don't even know if they have covenants or if they're even considered a subdivision.
Yeah, let's not get into that.
Okay, alright, moving on.
Could we just address a couple of factual claims, so the public, and we're clear on them? So, one is, you know, the, the issue was brought up that it, there is precedent for combining two lots into one, and I think we all agree that that has been done many times. The only issue here is that that's not the applicant's wish.
Correct.
Correct.
And then, the next one is the size of the lots. There was, there was one mentioned that they would each be under 7,200 square feet. I think they total 17,000, right? So, one is 7,500, and one is a little over 9,000, is that correct?
That's right. I think 90, roughly 9,500 somewhere there.
Okay, and then the other one I wanted to clarify was the zoning. Ben, can you address the, the discussion about the traditional estate residential?
Yeah, I don't think it was a mistake. I mean, we certainly contemplated this. When you look at this being a part of, I mean, the only lot that it was a part of was Amadele. The property to the south is actually slightly smaller than this particular piece of property. We certainly contemplated it, and, and, you know, we put it out for public comment. I mean, we, we had multiple iterations of that whole process for people to evaluate what we were proposing. We took comment, we made modifications, and to that point, I mean, there were, you know, portions of, you know, some of the older neighborhoods that went, and we created that traditional subset to address some of the concerns related to zoning, to make sure that it stayed consistent with part of the older, older zoning. So, that's right. That's right, and that was, this is on traditional estate, but I think there was a suggestion that this was supposed to be part of that. That's right, yeah, because it was part of a fraction of Lot 9 and what subdivision it was, and it was consistent with the property that it ordered to. So, I think, you know, it's traditional suburban residential.
So, from a zoning standpoint, we basically treated it as part of Amadele.
That's right.
Do we, I've asked this before, but I don't think, do we know what the lot size, not what the zoning is in Woodland Hills, do we know what the lot size in their covenants say?
I don't know.
Because I do think that most of those are 15,000 and over.
I think actually what it said is that there's one, one house per lot, if I remember.
It doesn't say a minimum.
I mean, just looking at the map, I don't know what the limits of Woodland Hills are, but there's a big range.
Yeah, it's 15,000 to 20,000, I think, just stuff I looked at. Just on land, I, you know, picking different ones.
Okay, before we leave, before we even get to it, I think, and certainly those may, some may disagree, but I think at, at the very least, what we need to do is, is at least provide, since we are a recommending body, and the Board of Aldermen has a final say, what the Board of Aldermen do is they take our minutes and review them without being part of the process, of course. So, I think Joseph had a very good idea in theory, was that, and I agree, that at the very least, before we do anything, we need to at least understand, or at least make a decision or a finding of fact as to what would be considered an interested or, or an interested party. And I understand that somebody that's deep in the neighborhood may say they have an interest in it, and I'm not disagreeing with that. But at least for our purposes, I think, before we go and before anything moves up, whether it be through appeal, one way or the other, that we should at least make a finding as to, and I ask, Ben, can you put up the, the map with the colored parcels?
I think this is the one that Kevin submitted?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it gives us an overall range, understanding it's not gonna take in the entire neighborhood.
I'm gonna make sure I was grabbing the...
And it may be attached to the second.
This one?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want, zoom in?
That's it. Now, my understanding is Lot 21 swoops down and actually touches the proposed parcel of 20.
It does.
Okay, so this is what we're dealing with, and if my understanding is right, Mr. Dunn would be at the corner, and Mr. Dunn, you may correct me if I'm wrong, you would be at the corner of Vivian and Longest?
He's at 98.
98, okay. Oh, he's at 98, he's on Vivian across the street, okay.
I think he has 98, 2.7.
So, at the very least, for our purposes here, I think there should be at least some type of discussion, and, and again, I don't, doesn't have to be an argument, it could just be a proposal. But at the very least, as to, we would give the Board of Aldermen at least something to base, or a finding of our best facts, the best we can, understanding that this is sort of a, a, as Kevin said, he, he just sort of made a off-the-cuff decision of who, or who may not be. And I'm not saying ours is official, but I think it gives at least the Board of Aldermen a basis to find, a basis to work from if we present them with simple, hey, I, I think that all of those in the color orange are, are interested, or those adjoining landowners, or less than those. Does anybody have any sort of insight into that? Commissioner Freeman?
Yes, sir. I have one point, and that's, this, this point that we're looking at here, this cornered lot, or possibly soon to be two-cornered lot, is right at the entrance to the subdivision. All the streets that go to the north and the west from here, I live in a subdivision that is a one-street subdivision. I'm very interested in those first few houses on the way in. I'm very interested in those first few houses on the way into that subdivision, and how they look, how the entrance looks, because it sets the tone for what you have in the rest of that neighborhood. So, I believe people all the way up where Cullen, Orwood come off, all of those could be affected by this.
Okay.
Would you extend that to Eagle Springs and Somerset as well? I mean, because they all.
Nestor, is that, is that Eagle Springs that?
Yeah, that's further down Longest, because by that definition, they all have to go through that.
Yeah, Eagle Springs and Orwood are sitting up together.
Yeah, I mean, because then that's a.
I, and I realize that, that greatly enlarges it, but I think you certainly could, an argument could be made that those are all affected by this.
I know there's still some subjectivity, but to me, an interested or disinterested party, we could look at it as, how are they affected monetarily, literally on paper? To me, that's in the vein of like an appraisal, an appraisal company to, to give comps on a house. They, they figure out a way to, to come up with how these, how we should price this house to compare values, so whatever does, whatever an appraisal company or a, a real estate agent that we would do as an expert can define as being economically impacted as a house that they will use to assign a value, to come up with how to list a house. I mean, that's, to me, that seems logically the way to go about it, but I'm sure there's other factors, but, it's my opinion.
And I, and we don't have to agree, I don't know if we ever will agree on a set of facts, and we may not.
Maybe I can make a suggestion, Brian, because I'm, I'm hearing similar comments from a lot of the commissioners on this point. If the consensus of the commission is that all directly interested or adversely affected people have not provided consent in writing to the subdivision plat amendment, somebody ought, somebody ought to make a motion to deny the subdivision plat amendment on that basis, and you, you could just move forward like that.
Sure.
I, I, I think justified in taking this image like you have it now, some of you may think less people are affected, some of you may think more people are affected, but as you sit here now, if four of you think everybody affected or impacted has not given their, their written consent, then that can be the message you send to the, to the board, and if that changes between now and the board meeting, and some more people change their mind, or give consent, or it changes up somehow, they can take those facts into consideration.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think at the very minimum, Twenty-One, Eighteen, and Nineteen, none of whom, well, one of whom has disapproved, and, and two of whom the owners have not responded in any manner, for or against, I think at the very least, that brings you within, again, the statute, which in my opinion says shall, and that gives me pretty clear guidance.
Sure, one, one thing that, I mean, we've all agreed that it needs to be cleaned up at some point.
Sure.
A sticking point that I see is that there are interested parties in a separate zoning district with very different standards. So, in suburban residential, the minimum lot size is seventy-two hundred square feet, in traditional estate residential, it's fifteen thousand, and so, I just see an impasse there. Everybody who's on the estate residential side saying, I don't want it split, because it'll be less than fifteen thousand, everybody on the Amadel side is saying, it's fine, that's what our zoning says.
All right, it's gotta be cleaned up at some point in time, I just don't know if we have the right proposal based on the law.
I don't think we do.
That's just, I mean, I, I get it, I mean, I, it's gonna ha- it's gonna come to a head one way or the other. At some point in time, somebody's, this has to be cleaned up, and it's gotta be either one, and it's gotta take Amadel, or it's gotta take Woodland Hills, or, you know, and at that point, or maybe it's a separate subdivision, one way or the other, it's gotta be cleaned up, but I don't think we have, are in the position now, per the statute, to act in a way that's not considered arbitrary and capricious. That's my opinion on, just falling back on that.
Can I ask, and, and this, they may not want to answer this, is the property owner, or the potential property owner, are they at all interested in just saying, let's make it one lot, and be in one of the other subdivision?
And would that have to be a whole nother case?
That's not the proposal.
Here, yeah, Josh, why don't you come on up?
So, I'm Josh Samuels, I'm the potential property owner. Due to the economics of the cost of a lot currently, it does, it's not feasible for us to leave it as one lot in either subdivision.
Okay.
So, it would only be preferable to us to have it as.
All right, that answers the question, thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. Well, like I said, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure we have authority to do anything other than deny it, but again, I'm open for a motion either way. That's my sole opinion, I don't, I don't make anybody's mind up.
We think it would have to come back, separate case.
Well, and Josh.
And.
Yeah, it's kinda come back one way or the other, regardless of whatever happens in the future, some way, somehow, some, at some point, this has gotta be cleaned up, no matter what, and who knows, I don't even know who the current owner is, but anyway, so, I, I'll entertain a mo- unless there's further comment or questions.
Well, and just to be clear, Case Twenty-Seven Forty-Seven needs a motion, Case Twenty-Seven Forty-.
Sure.
Because this, it wouldn't go on appeal, it would still just go up to the Mayor and Board of Ald- Aldermen, both of them would, but Case Twenty-Seven Forty-Eight is contingent upon approval of Case Twenty-Seven Forty-Seven.
Right, depending on what happens, Twenty-Seven Forty-Seven, it either, Twenty-Seven Forty-Eight either gets a motion, or it becomes moot.
As, as.
Well, and we would still, we would still, I think, vote.
Vote.
Right.
But it will become essentially either moot, or you move on and decide the merits up.
Do they prefer to withdraw it out once we vote on it, and does that affect?
It would still go to the Mayor and Board of Aldermen for consideration, and they could propose a new subdivision at the next meeting, or a subsequent meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we deny amended plat in Case Twenty-Seven Forty-Seven.
There's a motion to deny Case Number Twenty-Seven Forty-Seven, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor, all opposed. The amendment, plat amendment, Case Number Twenty-Seven Forty-Seven is denied. As to Case Number Twenty-Seven Forty-Eight, preliminary plat approval for the Vivian subdivision, is there a motion regarding Twenty-Seven Forty-Eight?
Motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor, all opposed. Abstain?
I didn't vote, did I?
No.
Didn't I?
Okay. Did you get that, Robert?
Second on the first proposal, right? Thank you.
Okay.
And, just for clarification, do we need, I know, I guess it was Paul a minute ago, or I can't remember which of y'all said, you know, the reasoning for it is that we don't have the full support of the affected parties.
That was my sole reason for denying.
So, we probably need to maybe include that just as a note somewhere.
Well, right, I, I think the votes came down, they may not necessarily.
And, and just to be clear, the, the, the reason to deny was because lack of support from the neighbors, but we never actually defined which, it was just the neighbors that were contacted.
It was just a lack of support from the.
Just, just those that were contacted, not.
I mean, it was such that we had six and one, so it doesn't matter how far you expand it, it's still, it's still weighted in the no department.
Right, to me, to me, at the very least, the adjoining, those which actually touched Parcel Twenty, and none of which have voted, or none of which have voiced any approval whatsoever, I think at the very least, that's why I voted, to deny, because I don't think the statute gives me permission to, or discretion to approve it, so that's my basis, yeah.
And, and, and just, just for the record, the, the reason I voted the other way is going along Commissioner Freeman's thought process, that the additional, you know, and maybe it doesn't matter the timing, but the additional neighbors could have been contacted, which, you know, if you extend the definition of who's affected, then theoretically that would open up more neighbors to have been contacted, and I don't think the applicant was thinking about it in such a wide parameter, but, but again, we didn't actually define who that is, so, so basically, it was those who were contacted ended up being the defining lot of affected neighbors, even though the lot of affected neighbors could have in fact theoretically been much larger, so.
Sure.
That, that's just the rationale behind my.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think there was also, based on the responses we saw from the community, there was some confusion over what was being proposed, and I would encourage the applicant to work with the neighbors to try to build that support before it goes to the Board of Aldermen. I would also like for the Board of Aldermen to consider the differences in zoning in particular, and that the way it's zoned, it should be, I mean, based on the zoning alone, it's part of Amadel, in terms of the standards that should be applied. And then the other thing that came up that we didn't address was a concern that it wouldn't be single-family housing, and there's nothing about splitting the subdivision into two lots at that, at that lot that would make it anything other than single-family housing. I mean, I mean, that was a concern, and I understand that concern broadly, but I don't see anything in this application that suggests that those lots wouldn't be single-family homes.
All right, any more comments before we move on to further business? All right, our remaining agenda is adjournment of this proceeding. Before we adjourn, once again, thank you, Molly, for all you've helped with and all you've done for us over the years, and we wish you nothing but the best luck.
This last hour should make me less sad.
Don't shed a tear for missing this on your way out. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor.
All right.
We are adjourned.
Thank y'all.